Thank you. You have heard me this morning. I know, and I didn't mean to call you back. Hi there. So what I just said was the only one that I'm trying to ask.
Well, they're gonna be in here. You know, in your life, but then as we think about that kind of stuff.
Do what?
As I said, we all, we actually think about that kind of stuff.
Yeah, that's probably something else I need to talk to Greg about with the budget. I was like, is it a bomb or is it a gift? Hello, yes, I made it in time.
Is that take one?
Oh, that clock is definitely wrong.
That's bad, isn't it? What happened?
He's just a setback on the pool, it's all good. You know, we ought to sit down.
Back there or Joanna is back there?
I wonder if somebody's pen, that is not my pen.
Sounds like a sword.
Who are you here for, Dana?
Sounds like Ed's radio.
Yeah, it sounds like a fire.
I think it's Ed's radio.
Is Sean doing?
Are you ready? I have one minute. Alderman, you look very dapper this evening. You look very dapper.
Uncle Frank used to wear a bow tie every once in a while.
The December seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four meeting of the city council is called to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Lesko, can you please call the roll?
Will do. Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderman Williams.
Here.
Alderman Rockford.
Present.
Alderwoman Purchase. Alderwoman Notiriano.
Here.
Alderman Carlson.
Here.
Alderwoman Conley.
Present.
Alderman Donilon.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mayor Buscher.
Present.
Mayor Buscher, a quorum is present.
Thank you, Clerk Lesko. The civility pledge, in the interest of civility, I pledge to promote civility by listening, being respectful of others, acknowledging that we are all striving to support and improve our community and understanding that we each may have different ideas for achieving that objective. I want to bring up to you, I asked Joanna to keep the screen up for just a minute, there's a QR code there. Officer Lamar Moore of the Springfield Police Department is doing a toy drive, and you can drop off toys at the Salvation Army or use the code to support Lamar. And the toys are going to be handed out at the Salvation Army this Saturday if you know anyone in need. So I would like to bring that up. And we have a proclamation, and before I bring up our proclamation, I just want to touch on, I just had, with Sergeant Rummons, the great, great pleasure of being at the 5:00 PM squad meeting, and we gave awards to Lieutenant Oldham, Sergeant Carpenter, and Officer Rebling for, essentially, we had a citizen in distress who was having some mental health issues, and they spent over two hours with this individual, making sure that she got the help she needed, and spent some time with her, and she finally accepted help from Memorial Behavioral Health, and they made a difference in this woman's life and her family. And so, I just want to share that with you, because sometimes with the holiday season, we don't always share those things. Good news. With that, we're going to do a proclamation. Alderwoman Conley, do you want to join me on the floor?
Yes, thank you.
All right. I think we need to bring up Lydia. Lydia Woody, would you like to come up? Yeah, you want your parents up here or if they want to take photos right over here in the front?
Right, the front row.
You want them with you or you want them taking pictures? What is the... It looks like taking pictures. All right. So this evening, we are giving a proclamation to Lydia this evening, and I'm going to read her proclamation. Lydia Woody, a student at Trinity Lutheran School, has demonstrated exceptional skill, dedication, and perseverance as a cross-country athlete. And whereas Lydia proudly earned the title of two thousand twenty-four LSA Central Elementary District Champion, congratulations. Showcasing her determination and passion for running. And whereas Lydia's stellar performance at the two thousand twenty-four national race in Wisconsin earned her the third place overall, securing a coveted spot on the first team All-American, a testament to her talent and hard work. And whereas Lydia is not only a remarkable athlete, but a dedicated student who exemplifies good heartiness and displays admiration for her family, her faith, and her teammates. And whereas Lydia's achievements would not have been possible without the dedicated guidance of her coaches, Karen Henenway, Heather Daniel, and who have helped her develop into the outstanding athlete that she is today. Therefore, I, Mr. Busher, along with the Springfield City Council and your Alderwoman Erin Conley, do hereby proclaim that Lydia Woody receives this proclamation today on December the seventeenth for your dedication and what you've accomplished. Congratulations.
Tigers.
Coach Woody, when are we going to have some sort of clue to you?
Get your thumb in there. That's just if you're in.
Congratulations.
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 You go, girl. That's pretty good.
Better than I could do.
Next, we will have a presentation by the city's audit firm, Lotterback &amp; Amon, so I'm going to let them come up.
Good evening, I'm Neha Rao, the city's chief accountant. We have Jamie Wilkie from Lotterback &amp; Amon presenting the audit report for fiscal year twenty-four.
Thank you, thank you for having me this evening. Small fun fact, my daughter actually ran against that girl at the state meet, so I recognize her, and she is a really good runner, so, yes.
Good job, Lydia.
Small world, small world, so, yeah. So my daughter did not make it to nationals, but she's an outstanding runner, so, small world. I am here this evening to present the results of the February two thousand twenty-four annual audit. Certainly, we have just a few slides this evening to go through, nearly two hundred pages that we've issued. I know we've put a lot in your packet this evening, so we'll condense that discussion tonight. I'll point out a couple of key areas as we go through as well. Certainly want to start off this evening by thanking the entire city staff. This is a coordinated effort each year, truly a six-month process plus from start to finish. I know in particular, Neha has spent an enormous amount of amazing time working on the audit. I see Ramona back in the corner here. I really want to give kudos to the staff. This is a large engagement. You guys are one of the largest municipal clients that really anybody in the state would be working with. So, again, I just want to thank them for all of their hard work. They always provide everything we need and request very timely. I think we've built a good working relationship with the team, so certainly want to give them kudos this evening. So thank you very much. The next slide in the packet will provide just an overview of some of the key areas we'll discuss this evening. First, the audit process itself, the award that the city received for last year's audit, which we will again be submitting this year's document to that award program, the audit opinion and related communication letters. And then I will point out a few key areas within the large audit document itself. So we'll start on the next slide with the audit process, just to give you a flavor of how that process goes from start to finish. We do begin in February each year, working with the city and related staff from a planning perspective. So we hold an in-depth meeting to learn any of the changes for the year. That certainly helps us in adjusting our audit testing throughout the rest of the process. We then go into our preliminary fieldwork testing. Our focus there is really the internal control testing for the city each year. This is the one time that the auditors get to basically have a pop quiz. So we're making selections, we're walking through those selections with various staff and throughout the city's processes to ensure that we're comfortable with that internal control environment. We then come out in late May to begin fieldwork testing. That is where the city provides final balances, supporting documentation, and we are going through that process of verifying that we are in fact comfortable with those financial balances and any of the detailed support that is provided by the city each year. And then finally, we go through a variety of draft versions, and that really takes, you know, a few different months from start to finish to go through that process, where we then have this evening, the final presentation of that bound official report. Documents provided on the next slide as part of the annual audit, obviously the very large audit document itself, that'll be the focus of tonight's conversation. But we do issue separate reports for other entities, as you can see up on the screen. Any of those separate reports that our firm did issue did receive what we call clean or unmodified opinions. So just want to point out that there were no findings, areas of concern, or issues in any of those separately issued reports either. The last two bullet points provide required communication letters, the first being our SAS 114 letter. This is where we would have to disclose to you all any issues with city management, any disputed journal entries, any significant accounting changes or disagreements that may have happened with management. I'm happy to report we have no such findings to report. So it's really the kind of canned standard SAS 114 letter this evening. The last letter is our management letter. This really provides any recommended comments related to best practices or upcoming standards changes. The Governmental Accounting Standards Board, or GASB, which regulates your financial reporting, has been very active, so we have standards, we're working with staff to make sure those are implemented each year in accordance with those requirements. But I will tell you, that does not seem to be slowing down, so we'll have more coming in the future as well. The next slide provides a copy of that award I mentioned at the beginning. The city did receive for the two thousand twenty-three audit, a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting, that's a mouthful, what we refer to as the ACFER, meaning you have issued what we call a comprehensive annual financial document. There are some additional sections provided each year. I'll provide page number references for those in the next couple of slides. But this is really deemed the highest level financial reporting that any local government can undertake each year. So really a prestigious award, I want to thank the staff again. There is a lot of additional information from a transparency perspective that is included in the audit each year to meet the requirements of this award program. Next, we'll cover some of the audit opinion discussion itself, so this is why the city engages us each year. As reference, this is the large document you've been provided, and this will be covered on PDF pages twenty through twenty-two. As I indicated, for the smaller reports, we issued what we call an unmodified or clean opinion. We have also issued that same level opinion on the city's actual financial statements. That means that the financial statements as presented are materially correct. And you'll see as part of that, we do also look at, as I indicated, internal controls, policies, procedures. We're trying to make sure that we have a comfort level on all the i's, the i's being dotted, t's being crossed, segregation of duties, really all those kind of pieces that the auditors like to see in place each year to make sure we're comfortable with that environment. As you can see, we have no internal control findings that would be deemed anything that we call a significant deficiency or a material weakness. So truly the cleanest audit opinion the city can receive each year. Moving on to a couple other key sections, this slide covers the additional sections that are required for that award program that we discussed. The transmittal letter provided on pages nine through thirteen really provides some background information on the city about the local economy, long-term financial planning and policies, any of those operating highlights for the fiscal year, along with information on any other city awards and kind of acknowledgement. The second section is really all the way at the back of the report. Unfortunately, most people don't get all the way to page two hundred and twenty-eight of that document, so certainly want to point it out. There is a wealth of information at the back of the city's report. Ten years of trend information provided on pages two twenty-eight to two twenty-two fifty-nine, my apologies, really covering a variety of topics, financial results, operating indicators, property tax history, long-term debt history. Again, a wealth of information that is really kind of provided at the back of the report as supplementary type information. Probably then on the next slide, the most significant section from any board or council perspective is what we call Management's Discussion and Analysis, or MDNA. This is really the executive summary to the audit. So we realize that folks aren't going to be able to digest two hundred and fifty-nine pages of an annual audit. So this section really does serve as that high-level overview. You will see financial results in comparison to the prior fiscal year, discussions of major trends and transactions. I did want to point out a couple of key items you'll see towards the bottom of this slide. Overall, equity for the city did increase in comparison to the two thousand twenty-three fiscal year. Much of that is coming from that continued capital asset investment. You'll see there, it was to the tune of about seventy-five point nine million dollars in new assets that were added. And whenever we have assets added and long-term debt being retired, that's where we see equity grow. So long-term debt, that would be any bonds or loans outstanding for the city, actually decreased four and a half percent. And then you'll also find in this section, discussion of major kind of economic factors, discussion of next year's budget and rates. But again, really kind of a condensed area that you can really get that high-level results for the audit from. And lastly, opening it up for any questions. So just wanted to reiterate the clean opinion, no internal control findings. Really, it's a pleasure each year working with the city staff, and we certainly appreciate it.
Do any alders want to ask any questions of Jamie? Alderman Hanauer.
Yeah, I'd just like to point out one thing, it's kind of interesting, back on page two thirty-two. It has the last ten fiscal years, the property tax levy from the city versus other places, and ours has been at point nine three eight five since two thousand fifteen. So when we, it probably goes back farther, but I'm just looking on page two thirty-two. And so where others have gone up, we've stayed steady, so that's attributed. A lot of people, we get a lot of calls that say, you know, we've raised taxes, we've raised property taxes, and this just proves that we have not raised property taxes since, I think it was eighty-four.
Eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven, so, but, thank you.
I won't say how old Alderman Gregory was, and I know. Any other alders have anything for Jamie? I just want to thank Lotterback &amp; Amon, Jamie, your team for their work. Neha, you did Amon's work, thank you so much. And our budget director and Harris team, thank you so much. And then I know that the utilities budget team also helped, so I've got to give them a shout in the corner too. So thank you all for your help, thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Travel's home.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The next item on the docket would be item number two thousand twenty-four dash zero four two, but this docket number was not listed on the posted agenda and therefore will not be discussed until the next city council meeting, which will be scheduled for January seventh, two thousand twenty-five. Is that okay with you, Alderwoman?
Well, it is on the agenda.
Okay, so what date is that? All right, do you have a date for that, Mr. Harris? The twenty-first. Okay, so that docket, two thousand twenty-four dash zero four two, will be discussed on January twenty-first. Thank you. Yes, ma'am. The next item on the agenda is docket number two thousand twenty-four dash zero four nine, for the property located at two twenty East Cook. The petitioners are Morrison Properties LLC. The present zoning classification is R five B, General Residence and Office District, Section one five five point zero two one. The requested zoning relief is variance of Section one five five point zero five six, minimum required lot area per dwelling unit to allow the structure to accommodate four dwelling units on a lot containing seven thousand six hundred twenty-five square feet instead of the ten thousand square feet. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff recommendation is approval, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation is approval. Concur with the recommendation of the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission. The chair will now entertain a motion. Mayor, I move to accept the staff recommendation. So we have a motion to accept the staff recommendation, can I get this? We have a second, any discussion? All right, seeing none, I'll let you, go ahead, and do you want to say anything tonight?
Uh, yeah, sure. You know, it's just another vacant building that we're trying to turn into affordable housing in the downtown area. And making it four units instead of two or one makes it economically viable for us to do that. So that's kind of the big goal on making it four units.
Awesome, thank you. So we have a motion and a second, no discussion. Voting will now be open, all those in favor of the motion, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. And the motion passes with ten voting yes, none voting no. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thanks, Kasey.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is docket number two thousand twenty-four dash zero five zero, for the property located at twenty-three zero one South MacArthur Boulevard. Petitioners are BPC Larkspur Springfield LLC. The present zoning classification is S two Community Shopping and Office District, Section one five five point zero three one. The requested zoning relief is conditional permitted use pursuant to Sections one five five point zero three one C four, residences located on the first floor and one five five point one eight two, multifamily residences in certain commercial districts as it pertains to the proposed Lot three to allow for up to forty multifamily dwelling units in a three-story building, allowing residences on the first floor. Variance of Sections one five five point zero six one, basic yard requirements for proposed Lot six to permit the existing building to have an existing building setback of approximately zero feet from front yard setback north property line instead of fifteen feet. One five five point one one four B, regulations for the location of off-street parking facilities as it pertains to parking for proposed Lot seven to permit parking in a front yard setback. And one five five point three two one A, non-illuminated signs to allow the user of the proposed Lot six storage facility, which has zero feet street frontage for the lot, to have a panel on the main shopping center pylon sign that will be on Lot five as an adjoining lot sign, and for a pylon sign, ground sign on proposed Lot five to be allowed the maximum permissible sign area of two hundred and twenty-five square feet instead of the one hundred and seventy-five square feet. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff recommendation is denial of the requested conditional permitted use and sign variance and approval of the requested setback and parking variances. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation is approve the conditional permitted use and variance of Sections one five five point three two one A, non-illuminated signs as requested, and approve the recommendation of the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission for the requested variance of Sections one five five point zero six one, basic yard requirements, and one five five point one one four B, regulations for the location of off-street parking facilities. Conditional permitted use is a final action by Planning and Zoning Commission per Sections one five five point one seven eight and one five five point one eight two. Council action is for variances only. The chair will now entertain a motion. I move that we accept the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation to approve the variances.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendations to approve the variances. Do any council members have anything they want to say on this item? Seeing none? That, then I say the voting will now be open. All those in favor of the motion, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. And the motion passes with ten voting yes, none voting no. The next item on the agenda is item number two thousand twenty-four dash zero five one for the property located at three Idlewild Lane. The petitioners are Timothy and Ashley Brinkman. The present zoning classification is R one Single Family Residence District, Section one five five point zero one six. The requested zoning relief is variance of Appendix A, Section three setbacks of the land use plan for Lake Springfield and its marginal properties to install a new in-ground swimming pool to the west side of the existing house backyard that will cross over the required seventy-five-foot setback from the lake shoreline. The new pool will be forty-one feet from the shoreline at its closest point, with the pavers being approximately thirty-seven feet from the shore. The Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff recommendation is denial. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation is grant the petition as submitted. The chair will now entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we accept the Plan and Zoning Commission's recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation. Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you, Mayor. Since this property is located within a special flood hazard area that relates to my work, I'll be voting present, or present on this.
Got that. Any other discussion from any other alders? Seeing none, the voting will now be open. All those in favor of the motion, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. And the motion passes with nine voting yes and one voting present.
I'm sorry, it's saying it now, but I clicked it four times.
Okay, I see it. You're good. The next item on the agenda is docket number two thousand twenty-four dash zero five-two for the property located at three fifty West Carpenter Street. The petitioners are Springfield Clinic LLP. The present zoning classification is R five B, general residence and office district, section one five five point zero two-one. The requested zoning relief is variance of sections one five five point three-one-one B, non-illuminated nameplates and identification signs, one five five point three-one-four illuminated signs, and one five five point three-one-five C, residential and office district sign conformance to permit one wall sign on the north wall of the building on the subject real estate that contains approximately twenty point seven square feet of signage, one wall sign on the east wall of the building on the subject real estate that contains approximately sixty point eight square feet of signage, and one illuminated canopy sign containing approximately twenty-four square feet of signage, and one illuminated electronic message center monolith-style ground sign facing east and west along West Carpenter Street that contains one hundred and sixty-seven point two square feet of total surface area signage per sign with additional surface area on the side of the electronic message center for wraparound effect. The variances of one five five point three-one-one B will allow the requested signage in lieu of said section that only permit one identification sign with an area not exceeding twenty-four square feet, and one non-illuminated sign per building not larger than one hundred square feet. One five five point three-one-four will permit the requested signage in lieu of provisions of said section that will only permit one illuminated sign per building not larger than one hundred square feet. And one five five point three-one-five C will permit the requested signage in lieu of the provisions of said section that only permit one sign to face each street upon which the zoning lot has street frontage. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff recommendation is approval. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation is approved. Concur with the recommendation of the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission. The chair will entertain a motion.
I move that we accept the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the Planning and Zoning recommendation. I have a feeling I know what Alderman Hanauer is going to say, but go ahead, Alderman Hanauer.
I bring this up every time and keep falling on deaf ears, but we... I can't think of one time where we have not voted one of these signs in. I don't understand why we don't change our signage rules and make it, make this easier on people rather than, because as it stands, they have to hire attorneys, get attorneys involved, get, you know, go through the process. It takes months to go through, and these, this is a, anymore, this is kind of our standard sign. So, I would ask that we, John, I don't know if you can get staff or get people to work on that with Katia and that. I think it would free up our staff's time, and we can worry about the bigger, bigger things. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderwoman Purchase.
Thank you. That sounds good to me, too, Alderman Hanauer. Due to my employment with Springfield Clinic, I will be a present vote. Thank you for making a motion.
I know, I looked at you, and then you just sat there. Any other alders? Oh, Alderman Redpath.
I agree with Alderman Hanauer. I'm in the same situation that every time we have setback requirements at the lake, and we talk about the, talk about the flood plain and everything else, it's redundant that we, that we, we pass them every time. It's because our plans outdated. We need to look at that plan along with that plan. You know, they talk about the flood plain, but we control the flooding because we have a dam. So, the lake's not going to go any higher than we want it to. So, we need to look at both of those plans. I appreciate that, too, John.
Any other alders? All right, seeing none, the voting will now be open. All those in favor of the motion, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. And the motion passes with nine voting yes and one voting present. The next item on the agenda is docket number two thousand twenty-four dash zero five-three for the property located at eighteen twenty-one South Fifteenth Street. Petitioners Humphrey Properties LLC. Present zoning classification is S two, community shopping and office district, section one five five point zero three-one. The requested zoning relief is variance of sections one five five point zero six-three A, required yards for lots adjoining residential districts to allow a minimum yard width of five feet from the west boundary line of the property that adjoins the alley and is adjacent to the residential district, one five five point four-eight-zero I, landscape screening and lighting regulations. Transitional buffer yard requirements, waiving the requirements for a transitional buffer yard between the buildings on the property and the alley on the west side of the property, along with any requirement for landscaping between the building and the alley on the west side of the property. And one five five point four-eight-zero J, waiving the requirement for screening between the building and the alley along the west side of the property, all to allow the currently planned freezer replacement and to account for future replacements of existing buildings or equipment on the west boundary line of the property adjacent to the alley without the need for further relief. The Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff recommendation is approval. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation is approval. Concur with the recommendation of the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission. The chair will now entertain a motion.
I'll simply say yes, but, no, I accept the recommendations from our staff, but I will compliment Humphreys. They've done a fabulous job in that neighborhood, and over the years, I've seen them make a tremendous difference in our community. So, again, I appreciate them.
Absolutely.
Second. Alderman Gregory, you are correct. So, we have a motion and a second. I'm assuming you're seconding the motion, not what he's, also what he said. Yes. So, we have a motion and a second for approval and to accept the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. And the motion passes with ten voting yes, none voting no. There is a reminder that the, starting next year on January fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five, the Planning and Zoning Commission meetings will now start at five-thirty PM instead of six PM, and that will be for the remainder of the year. So, we're moving the meetings up to five-thirty versus six, just as a reminder.
For twenty-five.
Oh, twenty-five. Did I say twenty-six? Am I skipping a year?
I was just listening to the remainder of the year and realizing we're almost at the end of this year, so.
So, all of twenty-five, yeah. No longer six PM start time, five-thirty start time. Thank you. The chair will now recognize Treasurer Redpath Fager for the presentation of the financial report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The treasurer's report for the corporate fund for the month of November. The beginning balance is forty-six million, three hundred fifty-three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars. We took in total receipts of eleven million, four hundred sixty-six thousand, two hundred sixty-eight dollars. We had total disbursements in the month of November totaling ten million, seven hundred seventy-eight thousand, seven hundred and forty-four dollars, which was, excuse me, which left the corporate fund ending balance in the month of November at forty-seven million, forty-one thousand, two hundred sixty-three dollars. The ending general fund balance includes eleven million, seven hundred forty-four thousand, two hundred sixty-three dollars, which is the November ending balance for ARPA money. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Treasurer Redpath Fager. The chair will now entertain a motion to approve the financial report.
I'll move, Mayor.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The chair will also now recognize Director Metzger for any questions on the O B M contract report. Do any council members have any questions on that? Seeing none, we will move forward. The chair will now entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the December third, two thousand twenty-four regular city council meeting and approve the minutes.
I'll move. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council first reading of ordinances into the record of this council meeting.
So, move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda will be the consent agenda. The chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading of the consent agenda into the record of this council meeting.
So, move.
Second.
No motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The chair will now entertain a motion to place the consent agenda on final passage.
So, move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, the voting will now be open. All those in favor of the motion, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. And the motion passes with ten voting yes, none voting no. Agenda items twenty twenty-four dash two-three-nine and twenty twenty-four dash three-three-three remain table four in committee.
Mayor.
Alderman Donlin.
Real quick, I just want to, there's twenty twenty-four, two thirty-nine, which has remained in committee. I intend on giving one last shot and getting the neighbors together, and if we could just have an extension on that one for one month, it's, this six-month is fast approaching, as Alderman Hanauer repeatedly reminds me. And anyway, I'd just like to ask that that be extended another month. That's okay.
It's fine with me, corporation councils, that fine?
Yes.
Thank you, Alderman Donlin.
Thank you.
Alderman Hanauer.
Mayor, I, I think for the debate of twenty twenty-four, four-nine-seven, I asked that we hold it in council for another two weeks.
Okay, so I'll read it into the record, and that'll be your motion, Alderman Hanauer, right?
Yes, ma'am.
So, the next item on the agenda is two thousand twenty-four dash four-nine-seven, an ordinance declaring the office of city clerk vacant and appointing a new city clerk. So, Alderman Hanauer has a motion to keep this item on the agenda for the next city council meeting. Can I get a second? We have a second. Any discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
Alderman Williams.
So, I just would like some clarity on this incompatibility doctrine. You know, I've been trying to do some reading on the municipal league's take on this, and I have no problem with what you're talking about doing, Osmond, but I do want to know the impact on what does this, what is this going to do? And my second question would be, have we inquired to the A G, the Attorney General, on their stance on what's happening here in Springfield, Illinois with these two positions that may be incompatible? Would I let you address it?
Yes, I called the Attorney General's office immediately when we, when we found out that, that our clerk was going to be in both roles at the same time. The Attorney General informed me that they will only issue an opinion on compatibility if that's requested by a state officer, state official, which would include county officials, but they would not provide an opinion to, if the request came from a municipality.
Okay. And then your opinion on the municipal code? I may be misinterpreting it, I'll be honest. I'm still kind of looking at it, but I was, I was looking at the rulings in the past. Are you familiar with any rulings in the past with holding two offices and the municipal, I mean, and the league, you know, holding a position on it?
Yes, there's about twenty-six pages from the Attorney General's office.
And that's why I'm confused, but.
Yeah, so, so the way, the way the Attorney General does this is they go through, and they will look at each individual conflict, and there's never been an opinion that's a city clerk and a county recorder. So, you can go on and find between, you know, a county recorder and a county board member and all sorts of different offices, but, you know, township supervisor and an alderperson, those types of conflicts are all, all of those opinions are up there, but there's not one that addresses this specific situation.
Yeah, yeah, so I read some of the examples, like one of a state senator versus taking the position of a clerk, you know, municipality clerk. And so, I agree with you. I couldn't find the example I thought I could find in that, but I just wanted to make sure we're talking to our Attorney General as well as being real careful with this, because we keep extending and extending and extending, and they are two different municipalities. You know, the county's a county, and the city's the city, and I just think that when we look at services to the citizens, I think we have some responsibility there to say when it's enough, or when is the deadline, or something, besides every two weeks extending it and extended it. And I know what we're waiting on, you know, because I'm waiting patiently as well. So, I understand what's going on. I just want to make sure legally that you're on record explaining this to me, so if anything comes up in the future.
Understood.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Alderwoman Notriano.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask, so in those rulings, is there a judgment on two full-time positions?
So, there's nothing preventing two full-time positions as long as the official is working both positions? If that, if that makes sense, so.
It doesn't. But.
Eighty hours, old man.
But, but I do understand what you're saying.
Two full-time posi, two, two elected positions can be held concurrently. That in and of itself does not create a conflict between the positions legally.
Okay, so, put aside the elected office part. Have they ruled on two full-time, like a full-time mayor and a full-time, I don't know, recorder? Like, are there, is there a ruling like that?
No, because, because what Alderman Williams and I were talking about was incompatibility of offices, so you're only dealing with, at least my research has only made me look at incompatibility of elected offices. I think that there are opinions on appointed offices, like city attorney, for example, but I haven't looked at the full-time aspect of it. I don't believe that opines, it looks at whether or not you can, whether or not you can fulfill your responsibilities of both offices without favoring one over the other.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other alderpersons who have?
Yes, ma'am, please.
Alderman Williams.
Sorry about that. So, I just, I just want to get clarity on who can request. So, what you're saying to me, does it have to be a municipality-elected official or any official that can request for the A G to issue this?
Well, we would, we would need somebody from the county to request it.
Or the state.
Or the state.
Or, yeah. Thank you very much.
Any other alderpersons have anything that they need to say? So, we had one citizen who did sign up in advance to speak on this ordinance, so I'm going to let that citizen come up and speak real quick before we take our vote from your motion, Alderman Hanauer. Ronald Hamm, is Ronald Hamm here?
Yes. Hello, my name is Ronald Hamm. I'm a reporter with the Illinois Eagle. So, the rationale behind recent Springfield city council decisions has been opaque, to say the least. Some members of the city council make decisions that seem inexplicable or overtly harmful and say or do little or nothing to justify these decisions. Other members have alluded to that lack of justification, suggested it is in part due to political mechanisms that laypeople do not have the means to navigate. One such issue is the resignation of Frank Lesko, or the lack thereof. Lesko's continued service as a clerk for the city of Springfield is clearly contentious. Lesko himself has gotten into shouting matches with other members of city council over his refusal to resign, even though some of them do, through innuendo and assertion, claiming Lesko was holding his position dishonorably or alluding to conflicts of interest they do not explain. I am a journalist. Political members of city council may be hamstrung by political machinations. I am not so restrained. Frank Lesko's most significant campaign promise was when running for segment county recorder was that he would merge the office of city council clerk with the segment county reporter. The purpose of this is best emphasized by his campaign slogan, "Hire me so you can fire me." There are technical legal means with which to do this. Some other large cities have done this, as Lesko has alluded to. None of that is problematic, per se. What makes Lesko's refusal to step down from his position as city clerk is that by holding both offices at once, he is de facto merging these two offices, circumventing proper channels he would otherwise be required to take to do so. To put it more plainly, he is at least flaunting the law towards political ends in a way that removes the democratic process. What should I have? What should I have? No. Lesko and his supporters framed their efforts to combine these two offices as cutting down on bureaucracy, focusing especially on redundancies regarding the holding of vital records. But the city clerk serves other functions for the city, including the hiring and firing of city employees and maintaining the city council calendar. The people of Springfield may have second thoughts about putting the responsibility of deciding who works for the city in the hands of an official who works for the county board, being as the county board has recently demonstrated an intense resistance to the necessity, to the necessary means of accountability and have shown a decision-making process significantly more opaque and harmful than the city council seemed to have. It is ultimately beneficial to the city of Springfield to maintain some level of separation from the county board as a way for both groups to keep one another in check. Ultimately, this is about much more than one person and their office. This is about the people of Springfield and our independence from undue or harmful influence. If the city council miller allows the rules to be flaunted, allows one person and his rich friends to bend the rules however they, however they want to, then the city council is signaling to anyone and everyone with more money than they have good sense to come and do and take what they want from us. There needs to be some means with which to remove bad actors from places they can do harm to the city. If such a means does not exist, then the city council needs to create such a means immediately. If the city does not create these means with which to defend ourselves, the city continues to let some people simply do as they may, then all of the people of this city, all 112,000 of us, will become merely chum for the sharks. And we know that those sharks are coming. That's all, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. So I have a motion in a second to keep this.
Mayor, may I say something? I'm sorry I didn't sign up, but I've been.
You signed up and you're at the end, so we will get to you at the end of it, Ms. Ramey.
But it has connecting with this.
You can talk at the end, we're not voting on this. So we have a motion in a second to keep this on the council agenda for two weeks until the next meeting. Alderman Williams, do you have something else you'd like to answer?
Real quick, I just wanted to, my, my issue, Corporate Council, comes with the swearing in. He, he swore in into the new position, is that correct?
Yes.
And, and that, that changes everything, I think, once you swear in into your new elected office. Had he not swore in and we're all on hold and waiting, it kind of makes sense. But now he swore in, he kind of did it to himself right now at this. And I think we are not being responsible for allowing this, uh, in the middle of other things going on about what we're going to do with our vital records. So I, I just want to be on record as saying that I think legally we have to be cautious and really take a hard look at and make sure we're dotting i's and crossing our t's with our Attorney General and anybody else who can help us from looking at the municipal code and, and their rulings on, on similar, not the same thing, but similar things. The swearing in i, is a problem for me. And I just wanted to voice that, thank you.
Understand.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Rockford.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So Corporation Council, we, we met a couple of weeks ago pertaining to doing something with an, an ordinance type, if, if law allows, you know, and, and to, for future reference and future elections. This doesn't happen again. So, you know, we, you know, when the holidays are over, uh, we, we won't have to worry about it till 2027, next election. But, but again, we do have to get something on paper to stop this kind of stuff, you know?
Yes.
If, if law, you know, allows us to.
Yes.
So thank you.
So we have a motion in a second to keep this item on the agenda for two weeks at our next council meeting. Can I just take a motion of aye?
Yeah.
Okay, so all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? The ayes have it. With that, I will go to any unfinished, unfinished business before the city council from our council members. Alderwoman Nociano.
Thank you, Mayor. This is going to be a real nice tie-in. So last week, or, yes, on emergency passage, we voted for the ordinance for the mayor to deal with the vital records in the absence of a, of a clerk. And I got some questions from constituents about that because sort of unclear, like, yes, you can step in if there is no clerk, but sort of what mechanism does the city have to protect the city's business and vital records currently with the sitting clerk?
I will allow Corporation Council, More Doc, to answer that if you do not mind, Alderman.
Sure, sure.
Thank you.
Sure, so the purpose of that ordinance yesterday is rooted in where vital records were, were initially housed at, at the city. It was a part of our Department of Public Health. And then we, we dissolved that and the county took it over. And when we did that, we, we have an agreement with the county and we said, we're sending all of these services to you. We did not send vital records over to them and our clerk kept doing the vital records. What our ordinances said, however, and they weren't changed, was that the, we, we had our ordinance on the Department of, of Public Health and section one of that ordinance said, you know, this department is hereby dissolved pursuant to this ordinance. Under the duties and responsibilities of the department, which was unchanged, stayed vital records. So the purpose, so what our code said before last Tuesday was, our Department of Public Health is in charge of vital records, but it doesn't exist.
Sure.
So what, what we did, what we did on Tuesday was clarify that it, it is housed with the clerk, which is where it's supposed to be under the state act. And, and if the clerk cannot do it, then it, it falls to another elected, citywide elected official. So that would leave the treasurer or the mayor, which is why we defaulted to the mayor. With the, with the clerk still being here, the, and still being appointed by the state, because all the deputy registrars need to be appointed by the state, then he is still, he is still the one who's authorized to be housing our, our vital records. If he were to resign, say tomorrow, then the mayor could apply it to the state to become our registrar under that until a new clerk is appointed. So that was, that was the reason for that ordinance.
Sure. And there's been some discussion in the community and, and I believe a news article about a controversy of, of Clerk Lesko wanting to take vital records to the county. Did that ordinance help with that, or are we still in danger there?
So Clerk Lesko has indicated to me that no records has, has gone, have left the building. Records, they're, the vital records are property of the city. And, and so the, so all of those records are still here, will remain housed here. And what that also, what that ordinance did, though, was indicate to the state a, in the whereas clause is a clear intent for the city to keep providing this service to, to its citizens moving forward, even if Clerk Lesko decides to resign. We will still be able to provide this service.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Gregory.
Two quick ones. So is, is these, um, is these duty, does these duties have to be done at the city? Or can we, can they be done at the county remotely? And then my second question would be, is there a guide booklet to how all of this goes as far as, you know, deceased bodies and that may need to be, how they're supposed to be moved? Is there a manual, so to speak, about this?
So, um, with regard to the, the question, the vital records can be done by the county. I believe you, you can go to the county to, to do that. But, but the, the city still intends to retain and do that work. With regard to the second question, where there, there certainly are guidelines and procedures, I would assume that, that the, the clerk's office has manuals for, for its employees. I have not seen one, but, but I, I know that state law certainly lays out how to operate. And typically, when you, when you have a strict kind of state law laying that out, usually it's, it's distilled into something that can be used on a day-to-day basis.
Clarity on my first question. Can our city clerk do vital records remotely at the county?
You mean do, do city work while, while over at the county?
Yes.
Uh, that would be doing.
Remote.
That would be doing, um, both duties simultaneously. He, he wouldn't be allowed to use, um, no, that, that, that would be a conflict on, on, on time. So, um, I, I don't know what the ti, or how that would work operationally, if you're doing city work at the county.
Okay, and then clarity for my second question. Is there a manual for vital records that we should have that in our city clerk's office? I know you said you assume, but how do we find out? I mean, I mean, I can ask him, but I want to, want to ask you.
Not, not, I, I haven't seen one. I've, I've heard that there's an operations manual, but I haven't seen one.
Alderman, would you like me to visit the clerk's office tomorrow and look for one? Or have them show me one, I should say?
Please, if we, if we have one, we, we, you know, we would like to make sure we retain that and, and, and all of those things.
I'm happy to help you, Alderman.
All right, thank you, appreciate you.
Absolutely. Alderman Hanauer.
Thank you. You know, one of the things with that, what we did last week too is, so if the clerk steps down, and I would assume it'd be somewhat immediately, you know, once, once the time comes, keep in mind, we have to have 48 hours before we, the minimum before we can have a meeting, but business still goes on. And that's the reason why we, we, we had the, had the, um, the transfer to the mayor's office, or to the mayor on this because, for that 48 hours. And, uh, once, once the new clerk comes in, then those duties would resign, reside back to the, the new clerk and, you know, all's back to normal. So, um, it just, uh, you know, I guess a way, a succession plan, you know, for, for a short period of time, you know, similar to if, uh, the clerk was, was ill for some reason and couldn't, couldn't be at work to do this, we got to have someone. And, you know, normally there's a deputy clerk, but I don't know that right now there is. And, uh, so therefore, you know, we have to, have to use this. And I think it's a good, good thing to have just for the future because, uh, you know, we, we, we still have to have business done. So, um, that's kind of, that was my take on, on that whole, whole ordinance, so thank you.
Any other discussion for old business? All right. Then we're on to new business, and I would like to ask Chief Kenny to come up for new business. I think you have two things to share to people.
Uh, yes, so this thir, uh, this Thursday, two days from now, 10:00 AM, we'll have the official ceremonial ribbon cutting for station number six, 2121 South 11th Street. I believe you've all got a, we'll invite and I will give you your copy as well. And then, um, Saturday morning from 9:00 AM, yes, from 9:00 AM till noon, we invite the public to come out and tour the fire station. We will also have Santa on site and welcome everyone to come for some cookies and tour the new fire station. Yes, sir. Cake, cake on, cake on Thursday and probably as well on Saturday, but I know for sure cake on Thursday, so yes.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alderman Gregory has something that you want to say to the chief, or?
No, I just, hey, I, I thank y'all, you know, I'm, I'm glad, you know, this happened. I think it's a big deal for, for not only our fire departments, but our whole community. And, um, you know, it's, it's, it's a good day. I'm happy, you know, I know y'all are happy, so I'm, I'm even more happy and, uh, you know, ready, ready to see it.
Yes, we, we will see you Thursday.
Appreciate you, my friend.
Thank you.
Anything else, Alderman Gregory?
And Merry Christmas to all of you, I'm sure we'll see you Monday, but just in case.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Chief. Any other new business to come before the council from the members?
Meeting is Monday.
Everybody, everybody wants a cookie. Mon, yeah, so next week's meeting is on Monday instead of Tuesday, because the city is closed on Tuesday, for those of you that are watching, on Monday, the 23rd. So from that, we're going to go to citizens who have signed in advance to address the council. The first person is Maribel Cruz Heine. But she's here this evening. The next person signed up to speak is Alice Ramey. There you go, Ms. Alice.
Your own, Alice. You know, I feel like we're here to make a decision about whether or not our city clerk to be resigned or stay until such time that everything is settled in the count, okay? I do believe that should be priority, because if they find out that he did not, then you will always be in the same, you won't have to worry about it. We don't, you know, this is the way it is. Before you know what's happening with the lawsuit and everything, you should keep Frank, city clerk, doing what he's doing. He does a very good job at everything he does, okay? I've known him for a long time. But for him to, you guys pushing him to resign, for you can put somebody else in there, which I don't think the mayor has ever, has looked for another person. If she did, it would probably be top-notch. But you guys have to vote on it, okay? Before you realize what the law is and the priorities of his job, before you get the book, y'all better start thinking about it, because nobody knows how this count's going to turn out, okay? Nobody. Until then, you all are jumping the gun and making him do things that he's not supposed to do, for he can have a good word or good taste in all of your mouths. That's not the way it should work. You need to wait until it's done. And for her to pick up another one, I understand, I've been in, coming to this city council for 28 years, this has never happened at all, where the mayor had to take over the city clerk's job, as you suggest, okay? It's never happened, okay? And it's never happened when there was, that somebody won a, a, the war, won whatever his position was, that he had to resign the next day. And by law for the county, he had to take the oath on the first, and that is what they say. So let's wait and see what happens, okay? And not rush somebody into doing something that would not represent anything but a dead horse sitting there, okay? So let's think about that, because I know how hard it is. And you all want to jump and do something, and whoever she picks is going to be good, because she's the only one that can pick them. Nobody else on this thing, but you have to vote for whoever she picks. So make up your mind how you want to play your game. I know that the gentleman said that you're not doing right by having him stay there, but until you know what happens with the law, you need to know. You can't say, okay, Frank, move out, I got somebody I want put in. You can't do that. There's no way, because nobody knows whether he keeps that position or goes over to the county. Until that's done, you have, guys don't have anything to talk about. And have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you. The next person signed up to speak is Jenna Broom.
Good evening. So I actually signed up to speak on ordinance 2024-540 regarding the Route 66 Festival. So at this year's Route 66 Festival in downtown Springfield, I was cursed out and given the middle finger more times in my life than in my entire prior 38 years on this earth. I will admit to being disruptive, as were other concerned community members. Our concern was for the individuals in the former encampment on North Grandin Fifth, whose belongings had been cleared out with no warning just prior to the start of the festival. None of us who protested that day had anything against the event itself, at least, itself, at least not when it started. I love classic cars and appreciate the time and effort put into restoring them, and I also take pride in being on historic Route 66. However, on the Saturday of this year's festival, I had very little to take pride in. Myself and others were told to F off and that we needed to get jobs when we weren't being drowned out by revving engines and choked by exhaust, anyway. After what felt like an eternity, the Springfield police finally got the revving to stop, and when the people heard what we had to say about the encampment, they agreed with us. Unfortunately, the reaction to our protest was not the only shameful part of the Route 66 Festival this year. Multiple businesses complained about rude behavior from patrons, blocked sidewalks and accessibility ramps, and a dearth of parking access for their customers. One business was shamed for being an LGBTQ establishment, and the organizers even took public safety for granted when they removed the fencing in front of the site of the former Elf Shelf Building. Some downtown businesses closed for the entire festival because it doesn't help or even harms their business for that weekend. Car show participants are allowed to bring their own food, and food trucks and other non-downtown businesses are allowed to set up shop right in front of existing brick-and-mortar stores. Considering this information, I propose a change in venue for 2025. The state fairgrounds have a fantastic new historic sign display, spaced for tons of vehicles, and would allow for everyone to enjoy the car show without disrupting businesses, eliminating already rare accessible parking, causing unnecessary amounts of noise pollution or insulting business owners for being queer. I'm not quite sure why $300,000 is needed for this festival, or why that money is so much more easily acquired than funding for the Heartland Continuum of Care, but that's another discussion for another day. Today, I request that council hold any funding or approvals for the Route 66 Festival until the following have occurred. Interviews with all business owners in the downtown area with operating hours during the festival to discern the positive and negative impacts of the Route 66 Festival on their businesses. Data collected on business earnings in the downtown area to compare the festival weekend to regular weekends, holiday walks, other festival weekends, and so forth. And a breakdown of public, as in local and state. And a breakdown of public, as in local and state, funding of the Route sixty-six festival, especially as it pertains to the overall budget. Uh, the festival organizers, organizers could work with a group like DSI to, uh, get detailed information about the economic benefit that the Route sixty-six festival provides to downtown businesses. I believe that this information gathering will help guide the festival into a better future as we hit the milestone centennial anniversary of Route sixty-six in twenty-twenty-six. I don't want to see this festival or any festivals leave our city, but I believe that all events should benefit our community first. The Route sixty-six festival needs to provide information to ensure that this, uh, relationship is mutual benefi-, mutually beneficial, bleh, to all parties involved, not just the organizers and car enthusiasts. Thank you and happy holidays.
Thank you. The next person signed up to speak is Anthony Galloway. Is Anthony here? I'm gonna take that as a no. The next person signed up to speak is Imbana Kentucky.
No, he's not coming tonight.
Okay, thank you, Alderman. Uh, the next person signed up to speak is Kaylee Freeman.
Alderman Gregory, I just want to start with, uh, you may be the youngest person up here, but, uh, you're probably one of the few that reads all the bills, so.
I, uh, keep, uh, all the woman purchases.
Right, nope, same with, yep, you're young too. Look at that.
Getting up there, you see.
Yep, I see, I see. We got some young, it's okay. You just weren't mentioned by Misty. I guess she was just trying to shame Mr. Gregory or something. Um, anyways, I can tell you the greatness of a man by what makes him mad. That was said by Mr. Lincoln. What's strange is what makes y'all's donors mad is when you don't follow their directions. Someone had commercials, Mr. Lesko, pay attention. Someone had commercials where they said they could fire us.
Your comments go to the chair.
I would like to be paid attention to. We did a civility pledge where y'all said you were listening to us. Um, anyways, Mr. Lesko said he was gonna get fired, but I still see him everywhere I go. Um, the cold-blooded murder of a Springfield residence didn't get Mr. Valla, Mistress, any of them, any of your donors, the Brants to come out. The violence against the unhoused, they don't come out and talk about that. But an election paid for by his buddy went outside, and he spent fifteen minutes out here with the pores. But I'm here to tell you about another friend of the Republicans, a donor not just to Jack Campbell, but to politicians with anti-immigration rhetoric in Florida, a friend who doesn't live here or pay taxes in Illinois, but, but, but he decided to move to Florida where they don't have property taxes, Rick Brandt. The Brandt family and their NASCAR driver got a whole day while high schoolers who can't buy politicians are left begging for a sliver of recognition for those who we stole this land from. A driver who isn't from Springfield either, he's from Riverton. He also doesn't live here anymore. The Brandt family isn't from Springfield either, they're from Plains, and they currently live in Tampa. Their daughter, quote, direct, has no intention of moving back to Springfield. I mean absolutely no disrespect to the Brandt family as they are major contributors to the modern farming systems in our area in the world. Their grandmother was a pioneer for women in the ag industry. But it is insulting to our intelligence to reward people that don't live here for owning a car and a driver. There was a young woman here tonight who runs fast. She runs far fast. She ain't getting a day. People who add to the nitrogen in our water supply, which causes toxic plumes in the Gulf of Mexico. Meanwhile, high school students, like I said, came here for several weeks and asked very nicely for Indigenous Peoples' Day to be recognized, and y'all debated it and debated it and turned it down. So here's your day. Sorry we had to get rid of your friend Jack, I guess? Was that what that was? Honestly, what was the motivation? Oh, wait, y'all don't answer to us, you answer to your donors.
The next person signed up to speak is Ken Pasha.
Uh, I do want to start off by noting that you guys just had a meeting on Monday for the economic planning for the HUD development. Uh, does anyone else know what was scheduled that night? I'm sure you guys do. It was the Sonia Massey Commission, that's right. You guys have got to do better than what you're doing as a city to, one, advertise that. I mean, HUD was just here a month ago giving kudos to our Economic Development Office for the work they do, but then for the next five-year plan, the literal only place I can find it advertised is Alderman Purchase and Alderman Gregory's pages. It's not on the Office of the City Municipal Government, it's not on our Facebook page, it's nowhere else to be found. I'm almost a hundred percent sure every one of you were sitting here when HUD said that the most important part of that planning is that the people in the community come out to talk about their needs and concerns. I'm gonna note that I have the same problem with the Sonia Massey Commission and their poor lack of advertising. So I don't want to seem like I'm just picking on you guys, but that kind of double scheduling makes it extremely hard for even interested parties like me to participate in our civic duty. How am I supposed to physically be in two places at once? I'm the kind of crazy person that'll watch you guys while I'm at county board, but most people don't have that kind of attention span or bandwidth to get that going, and that's not an insult, it's just a simple statement of fact. And it almost seems intentional to try and obfuscate the process and prevent most of us from even, even being able to find out about these sort of things. I mean, it's frustrating at best because we run into the kind of problems where there's almost zero debate about the money going to develop, to tear down a private development like old-town apartments, and yet we had how many meetings about some elevators for a real community resource? I mean, that seems almost intentional when we purposely make it hard for people to find out about the kind of programs that would have preempted those kind of conversations because we could have had that community development funding already in place. But we don't even advertise that kind of thing, and even if we had, which we didn't, how am I supposed to attend it if I have an interest in actually doing anything in this area? Do we not think the Sonia Massey Commission's important? Does that not seem like something our civi-, people in our community should be attending? Because when it's explicitly advertised as a place where, again, the community needs to come out and share their voices. And I mean, quite frankly, it's getting a little redundant that it's me, but, I mean, again, it's almost intentional that we schedule county board and city council meetings opposite each other. How is anybody supposed to get to those things and participate unless they're extremely motivated? I mean, I don't have kids, so I got more free time than most, but even I can't be everywhere at once. You guys didn't see me last week, I had to be at county board. Quite frankly, I should have been here, it wasn't that important, and I really do that much over there. Uh, but I will note though, I mean, a lot of that goes beyond that. Another problem I have is like, say, for the school resource officer thing that just passed. It's been noted, uh, especially in a district that's, again, still under a desegregation order for the last fifty years, that we have failed to meet even once, gotten close to meeting, uh, specifically in the hiring of our teachers and administrators, which is nine percent in a school district that enjoys a fifty-four percent black student ratio. Does that make any sense to anybody? Doesn't make any sense to me. I attended those same schools and they were just as disparate as they are now. And the kind of conversations that are needed to be had against that, again, are buried in the mix. Anybody know when the next school board meeting is for District one-eight-six? Yeah, it's gonna be silent no matter who I ask because nobody actually knows. This stuff is purposely buried. There's a reason these things haven't changed around here. There's a reason we have these sort of meetings that don't get advertised. There's a reason there was only three speakers at the Massey Commission last night, and it's purposeful. And if you guys want me to believe it's not, do something about it. Maybe just advertise it to your own constituents. It's not that hard to bring up something like this because I think you'd all agree this is extremely important to the community, right? If, if so, if not, when I get done here, speak loudly so we can campaign against you next election because you do not belong here. If you don't think this community should have more of a voice in the decisions that are being made around us. Because it's getting really frustrating to me that things like this keep slipping through the cracks, specifically when we had a federal agency come here and speak to you guys, lodge you for your efforts, and then this is what happens afterwards. Literally nothing. I want to know, does anybody even know how many people attended this?
About twenty-five.
About twenty-five in a city of a hundred and thirty thousand people. That should disappoint every single one of us. And not in our civilians, not in our community, but in our administration and the people in charge of it for failing to make that sort of notice to the people within it. Because we're gonna keep running into the same disparities that we have economically that we have for the last fifty years. Thank you for my time.
Thank you, sir. The next person signed up to speak is Robert Williams.
Good evening, everybody, City Council Committee. Mayor, I want to direct this to you because earlier this summer, we met at the First Presbyterian Church, and, uh, you had asked me what could you do for me, but you never gave me no answer. And, uh, the situation has, uh, intensified because I just got placed in, uh, Madison View and already, I'm told I can't have no guests in my room, and I ain't doing jack but entertaining my girl or whoever come over. I've been gone twenty-five years, and like I told them, you can kiss my lip, real shit.
Thank you, sir.
And, uh, excuse, so, do what you gonna do, but I'm gonna do what I'm gonna do. And let's get my phone. Anyway, what I want to talk about though is they telling us that we being punished for some other people that's engaging in illegal activity. And I shouldn't be punished for that because if they check the camera, I'm not doing nothing wrong. And every time I get up, I pray to a blessed, I pray, give my praise to God, and I get up and do what I gotta do, and let's get my life in order. Now, I'm trying to get these grants. Can you direct me where I can get these grants so I can open up a halfway house for the brothers that's getting out of the joints, sisters getting out to joint, and a, uh, a homeless place for the homeless? You know, like these churches, like in Champaign, for instance, I used to live there. I've been gone twenty-five years, but when I was there, they had a church that was open twenty-four hours a day for people, and it still is. Why can't we do it? You got over nine, so many churches, why can't y'all open one church and have it where people can come? And then these grants y'all talking about, it sound like a joke. And like my man said, her just came here offering over twenty-two-hundred-something grants. What's happening with that? You know what I'm saying? They reached out to me where they, I called them, but I never did, they never did get back with me. But, uh, like I said, they came, and now let's talk about the people that y'all say y'all know nothing about, and that's these agencies that's been getting us grants and not telling y'all jack, especially mental health. Allow me to work, give me a job. I got, I'm on the street, I know what's going on, but I don't see now mental health out here talking to nobody. I do more for the people out here on the street than they do. And that's for real, and you can ask them. You know what I'm saying? They call me Kane. And I don't sell drugs, I smoke weed and I drink beer, that's it, and I'm gonna continue to do that. But like I said, we need to do something about this, like, they talking about kicking us out for something somebody else get blamed for, that's wrong, that's wrong. You know what I'm saying? I'm only responsible for myself, you know, but I care about a lot of people, and that's because I'm a child of God and my people raised me like that. So I'm gonna continue to do what I do, but I wish y'all step up and do what y'all supposed to do and put your racism behind you and help each other.
Thank you, sir. The next person signed up to speak is Latania Smith.
My name is Latania Smith Davidson, and I'm here on behalf of my son. Well, I'm just a concerned parent whose son is living, was living and receiving services through Helping Hands. The day after they received his check, they put him out, leaving him homeless on the streets with no further assistance. It's a shame that, how they take these individuals' money and put them out with just only thirty dollars a week. Okay, um, I rushed out to them, you know, on behalf of my son. My son have mental issues. My thing is, we here at the Capitol, I'm from Chicago, and I've never seen so many homeless people here in the city, and here in Springfield, I've never seen so many homeless people before in my life, and there's no help for them. They need help. My son has real bad into, mental issues, and I've been trying to reach out to people to get him in a, in a, in a facility to where they can, you know, they can house him as well as give him his medicine, and they have to, you know what I'm saying, abide by the rules of, you know, coming and going. And I understand that Helping Hands have rules that he had broke, he broke the rule, but we got to understand he has mental issues and there's nobody here, I've been here for eight years, and I've been crying out for help. I don't know nobody that could, that I can reach out to on behalf of my son. I rushed out to Ms. Teresa Haley, and she told me to come here to speak with you guys. And I'm hoping that, that it can, something can, can happen for not just my son, but for the rest of the homeless people here in Springfield. Everywhere you walk, there's some people, they, these, these, these people out here with real bad mental issues, and they don't know whether they coming or going, and their mind is, their mental is not all the way, the way our mental is. They don't, then my son, you know, half the time, he don't even know half the things that I be trying to explain to him because of his mental. And so he goes to Helping Hands, and all they doing is taking his money. They put him out, how could you put somebody out that, that you getting their check every month, and you getting them thirty dollars a week? Why they do that? I'm the one that's providing his clothes or his shoes, and he can't stay with me because he don't get along with my husband. You know, he's, because of his mental. My son need help, and I'm here right now on my, excuse me, on behalf of my son. We need to do something about the homeless people. They not doing, you guys, and I'm sorry, you guys are not doing deadly squat. Do you, every time, you see they all around this building, the homeless people, they closing down shelters, and then they, and then the shelters, Andy, is taking these people money, giving them thirty dollars a week? How could you live off thirty dollars a week? And it, that's enough for a person to go want a drink or two of eleven or whatever, you know?
How much do they normally get? How much do your son get back?
He gets over eight hundred dollars a month.
Is that their website? Are they taking their money?
But my thing is, they get this money, so now, and when I, if I, if I can find somebody that's gonna help me get through this and get this money back, the first thing they gonna say is about these fees, these programs, the programs that they not even attending. They not even giving them no directions to go to. It's not fair. It's not fair because their mental is not there. And I'm a concerned mother. I'm a very concerned mother, is concerned about her son, and then I know the people up that's over there. I go over there and feed them people. I go to, I belong to Pillar and Rest Missionary Baptist Church, I go and feed them people. I don't even want to feed them, you know, I don't even want to go to your facility now because what do y'all, and once I feed them, what you gonna do, put them out? It's not right. And I'm sure as people here that understand where I'm coming from. It's not right. They can't be taking these people money and putting them out. They won't even give him a hotel room. It's not in their budget. What you mean? It may not be in your budget, but it's in his budget. They got thousands and thousands of his dollars. And this is why I am here. Can y'all help me?
Ms. Smith.
Help my son?
So if you would, Chief of Staff Disco, can you wave your hand, please? If you would go see him, he'll get your contact information so that we can work with you.
Please.
I'd like to see Director Posey here tonight, so we'll, Chief, oh, he is over there, he's on the left, he's hiding. So actually, go see Chief, go see Director Posey if you would, he is here tonight.
And I thank you guys for listening to my case, and y'all have a great Happy New Year.
You as well, ma'am.
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Before you walk away, ma'am, I think Alderman Williams would like to say something too.
Uh, yes, ma'am. Uh, I thank you for having the, the courage to come.
Yeah.
Because more people need to come. So this mental illness piece, uh, that we're dealing with in Springfield, Illinois, is so real, you, I, it probably doesn't help to tell you, you're not the only one.
I know, no.
But, you know, the gentleman that just left is a, a perfect example. So without the medicine and with the breaking of the rules, I agree with you, they should not take the checks.
They shouldn't.
If they take the checks, they should not kick them out. However, I'm just gonna tell- tell you, when I, when I talk to Continuum Care, Helping Hands, and some of these agencies, they would say, but Roy, we have rules. We have, we have a barrier. We have a, we only can go so low where we have to protect the others and do this. You are acknowledging the mental illness. And I need you to keep speaking out because we need to get them to understand Continuum Care not be, not be the ones who need to get the money. We need to give the money to the agencies that deal with these kind of issues. But these guys that are out there right now, like you're saying.
Yeah.
They're not out there because we don't have shelters. They're out there because they can't understand how the shelter goes and to get in the shelter. And because once they're in, just like he is saying about his place, we send them to a hotel, they're kicked out. We, if, if we get a church like he's suggesting, they'll probably get kicked out. This is true, I mean, this is just true mental illness, where, where something like McFarland Zone needs to be opened back up and, and reused.
See, he was...
Because it's that serious.
He was in McFarland, and they released him to Helping Hands. They had stopped his check. I guess that's what they said. They stopped his check because he was in, you know what I'm saying? He was not fit to stand trial because of his mental. My son is very sick.
But what you're saying, he's on the streets again.
He's on the streets with nowhere to go.
Which is not good for...
And it's not good. No, he's a grown man, but it doesn't, listen, this man, he get a check.
I understand.
Give him his money. They not giving, that's not, check is not for Helping Hands. It's for Donay, Richard, Ray Petty.
Well, yo, that's on, like a schedule they'll tell me, you know, they take it on, like, they probably took it on the first or second or third, and then kicked him out on the fourth.
Yeah.
Or something, or the fifth. These things have been happening. Uh, I don't think we as a city really, Mayor, we, we don't have an answer to that yet. Uh, I, I don't, I don't know.
But you know what? We need to get, we need to find some answers. We need to find a solution.
I agree with you. I agree with you. And I'm willing to help any kind of way I can. I'm quite sure these colleagues listening, and maybe some of them are hearing how deep this is for the time.
It's very serious.
But I guess we'll start with the director, but I don't know how much he could do. We're, we're talking about when we have no entity that would, would, would deal with these people with these kind of problems. So thank you for coming, ma'am.
Director, we'll help you with the Helping Hand situation, and then we'll work from there.
Thank you so very much for having me.
Absolutely, ma'am.
For coming.
Thank you. That is all we have signed up to speak.
Question in a second.
Question in a second. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Pos nay? The ayes have.
I didn't see Ethan on the side.
I can't see anybody. So...
No, that whole row.
Yeah, you can't see this in the row.